Welcome to this special edition of Inside the Duke. Our guest today is Ryan Pollard, running for councillor of the City of the Duke municipal election. Please listen in as he talks about his passion for the community and the social causes that drive him. Election date is October 18th, so make sure you tune into all the candidate platforms so you can make the most informed decision for you. Thank you for listening. Hello and welcome to this month's special edition to Inside the Duke. I am your host Tara Flynn. As a special edition, I wanted to give each of our candidates running for city councillor a chance to share a bit about themselves outside of the door knocking and the forums that they have been on. So, welcome Ryan Pollard.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm so excited that you're here. Thank you, thank you. So let's start off with a little bit of who you are.
Sure, okay, so I'm from the province of Prince Edward Island originally. It's where I grew up. It's where I had my formative education, my formative jobs that I had. Went to the University of Prince Edward Island, received my Bachelor of Arts degree, took a couple of years off and then went back for my law degree at the University of Brunswick. All the while with the same, the kind of jobs you might have to work your way through school, driving taxi was my first career. Pumping gas, being a bookkeeper, managing a shop, those kinds of things. Then graduated, articled in Summerside P E I, called the P E I Bar in 2006. What I found, and then after a while I managed my own law office. And what I found though was that my passion lay in litigation. And so when the opportunity came to be a Crown Prosecutor in Alberta, I took it and I didn't look back. So that's the job I've had for the past 12 years prosecuting in Fort McMurray for two years in Wataaswin. So that included Laduke for eight between 2011, 2019. And now for the past two plus years at the Edmonton General Prosecutions Office.
Nice. So did you always have an interest in municipal politics? Or how did going from a lawyer to running for city councillor, how did that happen for you?
Someone asked me this and I took a chance and he maybe gave a little bit more information than they were asking for. But my first memory of an election was in 1994 when Brian Mulrooney was elected. And my father worked on a local campaign and he did the TV ads for it. And I didn't know what election was. I just thought it was very, very exciting. You know, from that day forward, it was always a preoccupation for me. Anytime anything politically came up, I didn't realize I was gravitating towards it and took an interest in it. And you know, being an eight-year-old or a 10-year-old that had had opinions on the on the party leaders of the day was not, I didn't talk to my peers very much about it. But it was a thing that I was always engaged in. And over the years, I don't know how many campaigns I've worked on, probably over 20 or so provincial, federal municipal campaigns. This is the second time being the candidate in 2007, I ran provincially in Prince Edward Island and I got, I got 6% of the vote in that. In that foray, hoping for a better showing on this occasion.
That's awesome. Yeah, I can imagine that talking about political leaders at eight-year-olds would get you invited to all the birthday parties.
And I had stamp collection, so you can imagine how popular I was.
I can see it. I got an eight-year-old now, so I can see it for sure. So tell us a little bit of why you were running for council and what is your vision for Laduke?
Sure, so I was approached by a friend of mine. He said, Ryan, you know, you're a guy with ideas and a vision and you're able to articulate how things can be done. You're able to achieve things in the community. I think you'd be a good voice in council. So I considered it for a long, long time and I discussed it at great length with my wife. Because we both know, we work, Shannon and I work so closely together in politics. And you can't do anything without the support of your family. So we discussed what kind of a commitment that would be. And but most importantly, I had to come up with what the why was. Because I remember seeing many years ago, an interview, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't at the time the interview was done. It was an interview with Ted Kennedy when he wanted to run for president and against Jimmy Carter, wanted to kind of torpedo his presidency is what I kind of understood. Because he wasn't a very popular president in 1979 or 1980. And he was asked, I think it might have been Barbara Walters asking, why do you want to run for president? And he couldn't answer. So I didn't, I didn't want to be in that position. I wanted, there has to be, for anything you do, you have to have a reason why. And so the reason was, you know, everything, everything comes down to a social issue of some kind. And I see that throughout, I've seen that throughout my law career is that there's some kind of social ill, some kind of, some kind of something getting frigged up along the way. So people get the wrong idea, they get the wrong modeling, they get the wrong coping mechanisms. They're socialized improperly, they fall through the cracks and they become a problem to themselves and people around them and at the end of their society. And so what I wanted to really make the heart of my campaign was support for people that are in acute need during this COVID period. And so supports through FCSS would be the organ that it would be done through. Supports for people with mental health issues and mental health touching on all different kinds of people in different ways. So that in itself is about nine issues. And addictions, addictions has become, I mean, it's always been around and overdose and opioids is a big thing that happens in this present in our community. So that's a big priority for me. And homelessness, and I know that our city council now has been taking that pretty seriously. And they have a homelessness task force and then they're looking to move forward. And so it's not my vision to supplant anyone or to take it in a radically different direction. But I want to be a guy that pushes that, pushes that as hard as can be. And if just being the voice that pushes that along, you know, in the direction that's going, but also adding whatever experienced wisdom or knowledge that I am able to inject into that process.
That's fantastic. No, I, both of those points are very true for our community. More and more in, on social media in my sphere, because I'm born and raised here. You're seeing like so many people gone too early because of, you know, opioids and everything. Like it's such a tragedy of what's happening. And also on the other side, like as a Realtor, a home is so much like that Realtor is my full-time career. And it, how much having roots can really help sustain children and help them grow with self-esteem and everything. There, it's so important. So how this pandemic is really affecting homelessness is is two very great causes to join councils. So that's awesome. And it's a great reason why. So. Yeah. What differentiate, differentiates you from other candidates?
Well, I'm just a different kind of person.
I can't say most of them might have stamp collections at eight.
Like, yeah. I have a fair amount of knowledge. I have a fair amount of life experience. I don't, I don't, I don't know that at any point in using calls modestly. But the thing that I tell people said, you know, I think that you can learn, you can gather from talk a bit that I have at least 25% of a brain. And I'm able to make, I'm able to make decisions, I'm able to decide what's a good decision based on, based on facts and based on evidence, based on science, based on, you know, human factors, what's a humane thing to do, what's a dollars and cents thing to do. Weighing all points of view, listening to people, listening is such an underrated skill. And I've learned through my life that if you shut your mouth and let people talk, they'll tell you so much and you learn so much. And, you know, through, you know, I'm neither very young, neither very old. I was prepared for the youth forum today and I was going to say, you know, I'm at an age where people that are 25 years younger than me think that I'm very, very old. And people that are 25 years old are thinking I'm very young. And I gotta say, I'm really loving being in my early 40s. It's kind of like just the ideal age to be, I've found so far. So it's, it's kind of a good balance that I bring in. And I differentiate myself just by being, I would submit, humbly submit. Just the kind of guy that you want to have in your corner. Sympathetic, humane, but also like a tough fighter and the kind of guy that once he gets his teeth into something, you know, like a dog on a bone, I guess.
So I can see like the litigation part in regards to like bylaws and code and all of that stuff. And then you can see things as well because you've seen the social aspect. But have you done, you own your own practice, so then you can understand the budgeting part? Because I think you have to have a full grasp of it all in regards to be an effective councillor. So do you have that part as well?
Yeah, for sure. Like, you know, anyone, anyone that's been involved in volunteer activities, in boards, in community organizations, but also, you know, if you've been involved in the, the kind of inner workings of a small business or a medium-sized business, or if you've had your own business and for that matter, if you've had a family, you know, you gotta, or you know, if you've been involved in any kind of organization from for your church, your faith community, you know, you have to be able to stretch every dollar as far as you can. But also you know the difference between being, you know, it's a cliche, but being penny wise and pound foolish. And I, you know, so you reach a point in your life where you've gone for many bargains and you realize, oh, this wasn't a bargain in the long run. I should have, I should have, I should have spent 50% more and then gotten the thing that was going to last me 10 years as opposed to something lasted nine months. So I think that, you know, if you, people, some people are just cut crazy, they're austerity crazy. And then they just want to say, you know, I'll just, I'll just cut everything and without regard, let the chips fall where they may. And that's not a wise approach. The wise approach is to say, what is, you know, what's going to cost a little bit more now? And it's going to save us down the road. You know, I was saying this evening at the youth forum, and let me say, the youth forum was really great. And the reason why is because the questions were so great. And it led me to despair a bit because I was afraid that many of the answers that we were offering probably weren't sufficient to give reassurance to these young people to think like the world is in good hands. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we satisfied them. I really hope that they, that they had higher expectations and then they'll push us all for so much more. What I was going to say though is that if 20 years ago, we had the supports in place and it wouldn't matter if it came from the federal municipal provincial government, if 20 years ago, there were supports in place for people with mental health issues, addictions issues. Many of the social problems that we have today that result in criminality, that result in kids appearing in youth court because they're acting out because they haven't received their proper amount of love and attention and care and then have been misused and abused. So that, I mean, the cliche that I was trying to say during the youth forum was the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago and the second best times today. So we didn't plant the tree 20 years ago or we didn't plant enough trees 20 years ago. And so I want to be able to plant the trees today because we have to look a generation hence. And make sure that the society that we have at that time is the best one that we could have set up.
Oh, that's true. That's true though. We don't usually, it's just all about the discipline instead of the what that created it. And the social causes, which I can definitely see how you're really very, very passionate about. I imagine being on the other side in prosecution, you definitely can see the full spectrum of a lot of the social causes and it's definitely coming across very strongly and very passionately on your part. So, yeah.
One thing I'll say, and just because youth is on the mind for me right now. And I really, I really did enjoy doing youth court and love. I enjoyed doing it in this community especially because of my own community and what it did for me. Apart from some very, very troubled cases that came along, for the most part, it gave me some reassurance that the kids actually are all right. And most of them were able to be put on a good path. And it was never my, I mean, I don't approach any of my advocacy in a vengeful way, you know, in a way that's in a way that's just out to, you know, just bury people and get them for no good reason other than to give them retribution. I mean, I'm the prosecutor, I'm not the judge. And but the thing is, when I was able to do youth court, I was able to work with the judge and able to work with the defense lawyer and say, you know, what's a good outcome and what's going to put this young person on a good path? And you wouldn't see them again if everything went well. That wasn't the case for every person, every young person that you had. And so that was a cause of some consternation. But yeah, it's, you know, you have some perspective after a number of years in the same community. And you think back, gee, you know what? I never saw that guy again.
That's got to be a good feeling that you don't see them again, right? Like that they've pivoted and grown and changed their path. So that's fantastic. So you've mentioned a lot of the social causes. Is there any other priorities that you have sitting on the council?
Absolutely. So I had, I mentioned support and I created three categories of my main priorities. And they all started with S and that was not by design. Say, I hate alliteration actually. But they were safety, support and solidarity. And so safety, under safety, and I don't talk about this a lot because it didn't often come up. And I need, I have to be able to get a message across in 30 seconds at the doorstep. But under safety, that also includes all the social supports. Because every, practically every crime that happens has a social cause of some kind. This doesn't mean the person's not responsible for it. But a lot, a lot of things can be prevented if people are supported properly, but also under safety. And this is, these are the things that people talk about all the time when I, when I ask them, what's a concern for them? And traffic safety in our community is a big deal. And, you know, you know, I'm sure if you're around, you know, what intersections are bad and you know, you know, what lights last too long or ones that are not long enough. And you know where there's going to be accidents all the time. And you know, you can almost predict that you're going to be driving along 50th Avenue and where you're going to see someone rear ended along there. But also, and this is true of so many neighborhoods, speed, speeding through residential areas, people hate it. And they're scared for the safety of children in their neighborhood. There were two pilot projects that the city council did 40 kilometers per hour in two different neighborhoods. And when I went into those neighborhoods, like Southwork and asked them how it was going, they said, yeah, this is, this is a, this is a lot better. That we're happy with this. This is what we like to see. And so I don't think that we need to have a pilot any further. I think that now's the time, 40 kilometers per hour throughout the city, unless it's otherwise posted. Clearly, we can have, we can have stretches of like two-way, which is not in great shape, people point out. But two-way doesn't have to be 40 kilometers or that can stay 70. But or maybe in Black Gold Drive, maybe that can remain 50. But the other thing that people complain about, and I don't mean to say complain like, oh, they're whining to me. They're legitimate, they're legitimate problems. The noise is very bad in a lot of neighborhoods. And it'd be good to mitigate that in some way. And there are lots of different ways that could be done. I'm not going to say that, you know, there's a burn that should go here or a fence that goes there or, you know, more enforcement of of noise, especially with regard to those loud, loud mufflers. But people are pretty concerned about noise and I don't blame them because it doesn't take long walking down their street to know. You know, this would drive me crazy if I heard this all the time. But also the third prong, so I've already mentioned the middle prong with the support. The third prong was solidarity and a lot of people find that a bit nebulous when I, when I say that. And what I try to, I try to put in this perspective, like I look to places where social solidarity, social cohesion is very, very high in a place like the Maritimes and they were so much better able to come through COVID. A lot, a lot, they're not unscathed, but not as badly off as we were. And I think, I think a lot of it has to do with having a better sense of responsibility to one another. And I think that's fostered through a number of things, inclusivity. And under inclusivity, there's of course youth and seniors who are underserved segments of our population. People, persons with disabilities, a barrier-free society. The LGBT2SQI A+ community. I try to remember that. And each one of those letters is meaningful. And I don't want to leave one out. I feel they're underserved. And but as well, I think that so inclusive, oh, and I hate, I almost forgot. And I'm glad that I didn't forget. Truth and reconciliation is very, very important. And there are a number of recommendations, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission that apply to municipalities. And I think it has to be a priority that they be fulfilled, but also under solidarity, pro-social engagement for youth. Promoting volunteerism and promoting buying local, all those things, you know, no one of those is going to be a panacea. But all those things together in varying degrees, I think will build a stronger community, make us more resilient.
That's awesome. That's really, that's quite awesome that you bring up all those different things about solidarity. Because I never thought of it in that way. But there's definitely some room to grow that we can experience a lot of different growth in quite a few of those areas, for sure, we could have as a community. So I'd be excited to see what kind of growth you can come or what initiatives and things that you can grow within solidarity. So.
The other thing, and I beg your pardon, the other thing is, one of the things I want to create is a community policing board. And I think that goes towards safety, but I think it also, it goes under solidarity as well. Because I think if people, if people are the overview, and these have been done in various communities. And San Albert is an example that people are able to, you know, they have, they put their policing priorities to the police service in their community. And they're better able to say, you know, these are the things that matter to us. These are the things that concern us. These are the things that make us feel unsafe or they make us feel that, you know, this is not the community we want to live in. And it's not to say that having the inspector or whoever come over to council and having a conversation that way. It's not to say that's inadequate. But I think that adding that element of community participation, I think that it'll go a long way to, to encourage faith in the police service. But along that line, and I don't want to get too trigger happy with this, but the thing about, one of the good things about Laduke is the level of engagement of the citizenry. And then there are so many boards that exist and their boards do tremendous work. And I'm of the view, gee, maybe we can have more boards because there are certain ongoing concerns that could be addressed either with a board or a task force. So I don't want to go nuts on, I think, you know, I think that there should be, there should be some kind of an audit of a number of things. And one would be, you know, inclusivity and whether or not we truly are discriminatory, discrimination-free, you know, city government. And an accessibility audit to make sure that we're a very free society. And I think a community board for inclusivity, community board for, or task force for truth and reconciliation. And to ensure as well that, that the LGBT2SQI A+ community is representative and their priorities are met. Doesn't need to, I don't think it needs to be a permanent board or, but a task force may do. I think these are things that, further engagement for the community. Want to see if the will is there first, of course. And just bringing a bylaw for creating a board, might catch my fellow members of council off guard and think, gee, that's another night of my month that I have to spend on a committee meeting.
Well, I'd be wondering too, though, if it would be possible to have a youth council or a youth member on that inclusivity board? Because they have a lot of viewpoints in regards to that being in school or high school. Or, you know, I, I think that that might be of benefit as well, not just to have it as an adult. Because it's evolving differently and we see it differently than having not just a youth council, but maybe a youth member in that board.
I think that's very worthwhile. And let me say, there is a member of the youth councils on the FCSS board that I'm on. And he gives tremendous input. And that's, that's a very good point that you make about, about young people and inclusivity. Because they have such a great grasp on that and so much better than people of our generation. And I really, I really, I hate to keep coming back to this, but I really hope that we're not letting the people younger than us down. You know, there was, there was a question tonight about LGBTQ and how it applies to youth. And I wondered, are these, are the answers that these young people are getting, are these sufficient? Like no one, I mean, we only got a minute, we only got a minute each. It was the first question off the bat and I used my, I used my wild card right away because I wanted to weigh right in. And then in 30, and you got 30 seconds to talk about it. And maybe no one had enough time to bring it up. But like, you know, mental health and gender identity and their sexual identity. What a, what a minefield. And these young people, you know, are they getting, are they getting support? You know, do they see themselves represented in the community? Are they being taken seriously? Are they allowed to be their true selves? Are there mental health concerns being, being taken, being given proper consideration? I mean, everywhere in the world, trans youth suicide is such a huge problem. And are we, I really don't want to be failing these young people. It's, 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 I feel like if we don't take these things seriously, just so many will, will just slip through our fingers, just like the sands.
No, and I agree. And I know, like I'm being born and raised here. It's, when I was growing up, it was not like they were outsiders, like they, I don't know. I made friends with a few and we'd go to a party and they'd get punched in the face. Like there was just no room for it at all. And being friends with them on social media now, they talk about how, you know, the struggle of growing up in our community because it was not inclusive at all, has really made them who they are today. But again, we didn't have that kind of pressure, the social media pressure. Or like, I can make a mistake in the cafeteria and it wouldn't be viral. Like, like the pressure of that is just so much different now that I'm glad to see that you as a council member are thinking of that for our youth now. Like that, I think that that's very impressive for your campaign and for your stand and your why for being a council member here in town. That's awesome. So if elected, so what is your vision for creating healthy communities and neighborhoods?
Healthy communities and neighborhoods. This is, this is something I think we get pretty good here. We have tremendous, tremendous parks, multiways, the LRC. You know, there are many activities for people of all ages to get involved in, whether it's, you know, you know what is an issue? That's come out a number of times at a number of doorsteps is the accessibility pickleball in the community. And the thing was, the, you know, there, it's people of all ages play it. And they had access to the tennis courts and then the high school went and booked them all during the nice weather. And the people weren't able to play pickleball. So what that's only to illustrate is that, you know, we have a lot of good facilities. And it's not to say that we can't do better and we can't, we can't expand and ask what, what more we can do. I had someone email me and she wanted to see racquetball courts. And she indicated that racquetball exists in some of the fire halls. That's, I'm unaware if that's true or not. I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess, I wouldn't think that she was telling me an untruth. But the people can't use them, the firefighters use them, I guess. So we have, we have tremendous, we have tremendous facilities and tremendous amenities. And it's all conducive to a healthy livelihood. So that's good for our physical health. Mental health has to be taken very, very seriously. And it's a matter of truth in my heart. I know that to get counseling in this community, number of obstacles. One, not enough counselors and they tend to be very booked up. And it's hard to get even past intake. Two, every, every professional is expensive and a counselor is no Every, every professional is expensive and a, and a counselor is, is, is no exception. And then I don't, I don't begrudge them their, their billings. They're, they're, they're highly skilled professionals and, and they, they deserve the, the money that they make, but, uh, it's, it's out of reach for a lot of people. And even if you have good insurance, and I have very good insurance, my wife has, has very good insurance, but for instance. You know, it's, it's good for a few hours of, of counseling, um. And if, if, if we were in, in, in acute need for, for intensive counseling, uh. For, for many hours of the, of the year, we, you know, we, we'd be out of pocket. And I can only imagine what that's like for, for people that don't have insurance. So. FCSS covers for certain people that, um. Below a certain income threshold, but, uh, what, what, what it becomes is there's people that are quite, quite poor. Uh, that, that are able to get some counseling and there's people in the middle that, that have some counseling through their insurance if they have insurance or their job that provides that. And then presumably if someone who was very wealthy, they could just, just afford to pay for it. Um, I'd like to see, uh, FCSS, uh, you know, uh, raise the, raise the, uh. The income qualifications, the more it's accessible to more people. It doesn't solve the, the issue of, of supply. Uh, not sure how that can be done. I'm sure, I'm sure Laduke is, is, is not alone in, in society and in, in there being a shortage of, uh. Qualified counselors. I mean, one of the good things is that, uh, in this day and age, people are, the stigma is getting less. And it's not all the way gone, but, uh, people, people are, people are going to therapy and they're, they're, they're getting their, their mental health. And they're getting their mental, mental health in order. And then that's a good thing. And, um, it's gonna rectify. You know, decades maybe of, uh, of, of it being neglected. Um. So that, that, that's on the, on the mental health, uh, side of things. But also I think that, uh. You know, cl- you know, climate change is, is an issue and pollution is an issue. And, uh, in order to have a healthy community, I think those need, need to be looked after as well. Um, climate change came up as a, as a question tonight at the youth forum and, um. You know, the question was, um. You know, a lot of young people feel intense anxiety about climate change, uh, and. You know, what, what we do to address that? And, um, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if everyone really understood that, uh. If the young people I know, like people in their late teens or in their twenties or in their thirties, they, they have, uh, they have a. Sense of existential dread. They, 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 they feel a sense of doom. They don't, they don't see a, a future the same way that. I mean, I'm, I'm at the very young end of, of Generation X and they, even though we thought that we had things. A little bit more difficult than our baby boom or parents, we, we thought, well, I mean, eventually we'll. We'll have a family and a home and, and a job that we're able to retire from. They don't foresee that. They foresee environmental collapse in, in twenty or thirty years. Um. This is just to say that, uh, you know, some climate change is, 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 it almost seems insurmountable, but, uh. There, there are things, just because things that we do will be small, won't mean that, uh, they're not worth doing. And I think that, uh. Reducing emissions, uh, for, in our city, uh, it'll be one good for, good for people's health because there won't be the pollution in the air, but. And good for our health insofar as that it, it may, may, may give us a few more years on this planet before everything falls apart. But also good for, good for, um, people's outlook, um. And then probably makes economic sense too. Makes economic sense to still have an ecosystem in, in, in a couple of generations, I think. Still be able to live on the, on the planet that birthed us.
Yes, that's true. Um, in regards to your mental health, though, I, I was, um. I'm wondering if virtual, if we can reach out to people outside of our community. Um, potentially to have virtual as well in regards to the supply part because. You might not have to be face to face with that, um, if they are booked up. Um. But also too in regards to, um, paying, like, if you have a privatized, uh, benefits plan as well. If you have a pre-existing condition of medical or mental health, you won't be covered either. So you can have a very great benefits plan through, uh. Private and then still not be covered if you saw a counselor one time. So.
Oh, really? I was not aware of that.
Yeah, well, because it's a pre-existing condition. So, um, that might be something too that FCSS might be able to help with the shortfall if. With that as well, potentially.
Okay, yeah, I never considered that.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I was just having these conversations actually with, with, uh, a friend of mine about mental health too. So. Um, it was interesting to different benefits packages and how everything pans out. So even when you think you're covered, you might not be covered. So.
I know that Alberta Health does have telehealth and so you can see a psychiatrist over, over, uh, or, over a Zoom meeting or a phone call. So, uh. And I do see, I do see ads come up in my social media algorithms, uh, you know, advertising, uh, remote, remote mental health, uh, counseling.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's something that was a new concept for me. So I just thought that might be interesting, but, uh. I never even thought about the doom and gloom of the youth, like my children are young enough that, you know. They know that winters weren't like this when mommy grew up, but it's not a sense of doom, so doom or gloom. So. That's really an eye opening viewpoint in regards to the youth that, that they have that incentive doom and gloom and anxiety given the future. So. Um. Yeah, that, that was very eye opening.
I've heard young people joke and it's a, you know, it's a bit of sardonic joke, but, uh, they joke, my, my retirement plan is the collapse of society. And, uh, when that, when that happens, money won't mean anything anyway.
Right? Yeah, who knows what kind of currency they're gonna have when they go, if we've already got, you know, crypto, Bitcoin and everything now. Who knows the currency? Um, so do you have any parting words for our listeners?
Well, what I, what I can say, and I, I try not to deal in cliches and, and, and buzzwords and slogans and things like that, but the truth of the matter is, like, you know, um. I'm a hard worker, tremendous capacity for work, tremendous, uh, capacity to, to fight for people. And I've always done that, whether it was in my legal career. Outside and in, 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 just in the community, uh, you know, going to bat for people. You get six votes. I, I realize I'm a new guy, uh, you know, I'm trying to unseat and, and, and unnamed, I mean, there's no. Single incumbent that, that I'm trying to unseat. The thing is, if I'm gonna get in, someone has to go. And, uh, what I hear over and over again is people say, well, I like experience and I also like, uh, new blood. So, uh. A good combination of that would be just, it's just a healthy amount of, of turnover. So, uh. He gets six votes, uh, consider making me, uh, making me one of them. Uh, you, you won't regret it because, uh. I, I'm just, I'm just a tireless, tireless guy and, uh, everything I put my mind to. I just, I just grind it and, uh. I want to be your ally and counsel and, uh, and goodness, I'll, I'll fight so hard for you.
That's awesome. Well, thank you so very much for coming on today's episode. I hope our listening audience has, um, got their. Um, ears full of with your viewpoints and, um, will take this when they vote for their, um, ballot. So thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.